I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
I'd like to open the meeting of the Adventist Town Council. Councilor to conduct this on behalf of citizens of Adventist Indiana who here from British Department of Fire and Rescue is a public to divide opinions and serve council proceeding and occasioning allow anybody with a stick or something. When we the town council adopted the rules of no one to speak unless recognized that council president once recognized the previous such things. Sam state the name said the permits when addressing council speakers shall remain on a separate discussion should not introduce any new matter for further discussion. Don't pervert any or void will be allowed by council in session. Those are allowed to speak from the government will be prevented speak three minutes the first time two minutes the second time and more than the last time. On the matter of the current subject council by statute as well as covering all matters mistakes should conduct being such an order in way that is indeed necessary to maintain order in the proceeding. President would like to discuss a new concern but to request request the speech part must be completed returning to the court of justice no later Wednesday card at the town council meeting. For receipt up that day what can play something on within town council can take reasonable steps to maintain order in the meeting with the removal of any course of this unwelcome thing be disrupted during meeting. Uh one thing more uh because of the the system we got online uh one person talking at home. We've had some problem with people saying when multiple people talk that they they get it screws everything up. Okay. Once you talk enough just wanted to come. And then Jim. Here at the end of your report, council considered resolution twenty twenty five oh eight vegetation present couple of signs, a title plot claim for end up.
Um so resolution twenty five oh eight resolution to town of Adventist Town Council adopted title six implementation plan for coordinator for the town of Adventist Town of Adventist Indiana recognizes its obligations to comply with requirements of the title six of the civil rights act nineteen sixty four. The town of Adventist desires to take necessary steps to ensure compliance within or upon public facilities and improvements now by four year result of the treasures designated as the title six coordinator. Agreement's form is hereby adopted to address complaints alleging discrimination and provisions of service programs and or benefits by the town of Adventist. The town council will post the contact information with title six plan on the town's website and at other locations as deemed appropriate from time to time for the state October.
What is title six?
No discrimination.
Yeah.
Yep, and then where you have to and it's required that we update this annually if we want to do community crossings.
It's another step.
Another step, yeah.
You keep adding stuff.
Um yeah.
Okay, again, motion is approved.
Oh yes.
So suspend the perjury.
Make a motion to suspend perjury.
Say it. Tom, perjury, say I. Uh-huh. And motion to approve the uh raise resolution.
So this is pretty much a saying of discrimination.
Oh, yeah, it's it's a plan and that we treat and then Gary had to sign this to our.
So this should be sure he actually not to, but.
I make a motion for a motion twenty five that's there, right?
Say it. Tom, perjury, say I.
Okay, so we got our.
I'm moving.
And then the next thing Gary had um. Uh Gary has a a commitment letter. This is for the next round, the round of community crossings, which we only have to um we are one of the part to twenty percent now let's just change. So our commitment for uh the next local match is forty four thousand three hundred eighty. I believe it was cherish you. What was the other one?
My.
And for Jen, and for Jen to sign and all sign and all end up community crossings with people.
Having made a motion to approve a commitment for community courses. Yeah, I make a motion. Say it. Tom, perjury, say I. As long as we get the money, get the state paper motion.
Yeah, this the sidewalks tie themselves to be crazy to pay for. So this is a program that we can get it done. That's all.
Can we do the for the time management?
Yeah, and I include that motion.
Okay. Uh next step, you got anything else for Gary, man?
Uh. Yes, and then we also need a ratification of you signing the title six plan that has already been submitted to document to October first.
Make a motion for Jim to sign the.
Say it. Tom, perjury, say I.
I.
Okay, that's the last one.
That's the last one, cherish.
Council will consider budgeted adoption ordinance.
Um so just a highlight, ready uh we don't have appropriate uh ready day um town of home world funds that I'd like to include in there just so everybody's aware what we're spending. So ready day ten thousand, general fund uh two hundred and seven thousand six hundred twenty two dollars uh adopt a tax rate point six one seven four. Local road and streets not required for the budget at nine thousand seven hundred fifty. M A H sixty four thousand for point three one four on adopted tax levy. Parks and Rec twenty two thousand nine hundred twenty two or point one five one seven tax rate C Z B uh C C I, I'm sorry, twenty five hundred, C Z B five thousand. Home World Fund um one which is for community crossings, one hundred and seventy five thousand and Home World Fund two which is uh with public safety, sixty three thousand seven hundred ninety. Um.
Also one, also Home World Fund one.
Which one?
Also Home World Fund one.
That's for community crossings. Uh I I have to appropriate it um but sorry, just put that in there.
Can you give a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the budget uh for anything in that.
Twenty six.
Second.
Second.
Tom, perjury, say I.
Uh-huh.
I need what? Let's see.
Same.
Because this Jim's on the per di carpet, he cannot put for the budget. So I don't know if I already marked you. I mean, as long as you're staying, you can still sign as long as it's marked.
President signed it off on that.
No, maybe what about your meeting then comes up to break, comes up to what?
Then especially the minutes.
And so we need that for September.
Tom, perjury, say I. Council considered.
All right, let's just. I mean, please, you sign them.
Huh?
You sign them, I wonder if you're all over.
Okay. Council, town should have a plan for October thirteen. I'd like to vote and accept the term drop for the first time.
Okay.
Tom, perjury, say I.
Uh-huh.
Council, you're tired of it.
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, you seconded that. Uh claims for the month were three hundred five thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and forty nine cents. The reason of the significant increase was one hundred fifty thousand must be to I S C for Smith, which they already paid for. How much did it? Three hundred ninety three thousand total, but one hundred fifty thousand must be paid to I S C for the day.
There's mental planning. Got some more work to do.
They forced away from the.
Some of that underground?
No, well, maybe at the side right right here on every that seems diverted. You've got the big new transformer that's there. Last I heard, they were trying to work with the Dover church to get that transformer in because the original transformer was located not correctly per these uh national standards. So I can move it for the generally about ten feet or so. So it has to be. Any more? Court treasurer, eight.
We've got some reconciliation. For September, uh American South Dallas was two million three hundred thirty one thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and five cents, and the fund report was the same. He said. And um court treasurer should report any comment for the fund appropriation reports.
Nope.
Uh adjustments. How's the town trash that got filled up every time? That's just if there's ever anything that we need like special picked up, yeah. And that we got reduced, starting with the new project two, that's that's to reduce it, so that's good. Um adjust adjustments. Uh fire department, uh two hundred thirty three dollars and sixty six cents. And there was a list that was on the town side of four hundred thirty six dollars and nine cents for a total of negative six hundred sixty nine dollars and seventy five cents.
I make a motion to uh add the adjustments. Second. Tom, perjury, say I.
You can sign that and pass that, pass that. Let's see, uh Trex is done as of October first of the year. I think did it at twenty six hundred. I didn't look up yet now, but.
Well, I don't know what we said.
Yeah, absolutely.
You see in that.
Uh trick or treat, um so I know you guys are doing the trump or treat on the twenty fourth, but if people want to have their house lights on on Friday the thirty first is Tuesday. Which I can check, we've done it like that way at the house.
That's what I've been up for years.
So I asked Jimmy, so are you okay with it keeping it that way?
Let's go ahead and make a motion to vote it that way.
All right, we have a trigger treaty, six to eight.
Second. Tom, perjury, say I.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Consider ways to make that in.
Yes, so I talked to the auditors about this. I paid it within, as you know, we have thirty days to make claims. Uh they sent me a late fee on this for fourteen dollars and sixty four cents. I asked the auditor about it, uh on Sunday before we have an exit conference. Um so we need to write it in the resolution, so I need approval to pay this.
A motion to approve the uh thirteen dollars and sixty four cents. Maybe.
All right, a motion for the thirteen dollars issue in the city.
Second. Tom, perjury, say I. What what people expect.
May it's more inside the summer of the sewer plant, may you take that thing sludge thing now, that's all right. All right, and then there was a there was a.
Because we're running a minute, and they know we're not going to be paying them thirty days.
Because what?
Because they know they're not going to be paid in the time that they make that up.
Oh, I I'm not having one at all.
I don't have that.
Oh.
The owners. That's why I I go with Nick.
I I would.
Just flat out, no more they're gonna be.
I'll call them and tell them I refuse to pay and see what they say.
Yeah.
Would you want to read that?
Yeah, I'm gonna I'm gonna write and read it.
You wanna? Yeah, because we don't have one, because I think it's.
In red six, so. Okay. Uh memorandum to the Adventist Town Council subject officer, Dan Bueller, on the bank officer, Bueller, for prepared waiting for the meeting at the traffic south of the street around Monke and Lindsay. I think Wade Daniel said word was texting to that not for mounting and forcing traffic for safe public safety were trading where recently who made their stake on the D N A so. And they're kind of worried for Adventists.
And Justin, you pulled up my cover.
Yeah, that's right. You just have, David told me this, you got that.
I said, that's my book, but nobody appreciated that because he was stopped somewhere else on my podcast. Professional, so we really appreciate it. So I got it right now, or we can come to you and make sure we can talk to him for me.
Yes. And it's I agree with you, there's he did a terrific job. She does land a check on all people on the road.
But he still, I thought he was not kind of good person.
No, he is until the end of the year, but many people can talk to him. And doing a part hand. Your utility contract or what do you meant?
Not me, I just. Yep.
He's getting far.
It's it's it was little.
Just give him a.
Okay, park, uh the R C track, as you probably everyone seen it, totally re done, looks beautiful. They only got one race, but it was the big race of the season that they used to do, which the finale of their points tournament.
I think they said there were still over a hundred entries.
It was very successful for them. Um and people loved the new jumps and stuff that they did stuff to get it more airborne and stuff, so uh hopefully that will spread and be ready for next and the world goes straight and they'll have, you know, greater turn out of that next year. Uh the burn pile is gone thanks to Carrie and Jim, I think it was like Carrie.
That's what we're waiting on, when you guys get there, and she's a she was.
We got there like ten minutes after they called, and it was like.
I said.
Ash.
It's an empty meter, one, here is a quarter zone, we ordered half a month.
Yeah, she was having fun, so that's that's all. And it's fun, and there's plenty of boards that could build it. Uh the uh the rule sign has uh backed up, Doug, you got that repaired. We're gonna do a little more when there's some coughing and then paint it up and stuff, but it's up there, isn't gonna fall out anymore, so that's taken care of. Uh we had a day of service with vessel on the thirtieth, and we got five tons of pea gravel spread. I wonder if anyone's seen that, uh all around the concession stand, all around the shelter, all around the uh the grills, the benches, basically anything that was permanently in the ground, they weeded it down to the dirt and then put gravel under. So it should help with drainage and weeding and mowing and everything should be is a little bit easier like that. Uh and it looks really nice. I love the way it looks on the concession stand and stuff, so that was great. They also painted and got the old equipment painted, so it's ready for the next phase. Jeepers Creepers is coming along. I we started doing advertising, we got the trophies in for the best decorated Jeep and I think Carrie's bringing something for the second third, she said. And we have a medal for the kid with the scariest costume and so.
I'll try to put it on her, like, sign out there.
Okay. Uh we went with medals for the scariest and then the non-scariest so that, you know, the princesses have a chance to win and stuff. Uh and when I was a kid, I would have rather gotten a medal than a trophy anyway, because you can wear it because it's small and stuff, it'd be cool. Uh we are doing a three month oxygen initiative here, it's become kind of the annual thing for the park to do, uh and treat bats, and then we're gonna have the trumpet treating, we're gonna have music with the kids dance, uh fire truck's gonna be out there. Uh we are having with the costume contest in the Jeep contest, we need some judges, so we were hoping the town council board would uh step up and be our judges that night for the costume contest and the and the Jeep contest. So we have some gays and nays. Sam.
Amanda.
And the free water. Dale.
Will be around.
Okay.
Won't be good.
He's gonna be busy. Sherry?
I won't be here, but Carrie could do it on your behalf.
Oh, Carrie, it's maybe rather.
What's that?
She did rather for uh.
One of these guys could do it.
Uh. Oh my God, my Alzheimer's is kicking in. Carla.
Oh, she she'll probably be with us.
Oh, okay.
Carrie's pretty, I'll let um volunteer her.
Okay, it's only three, that way we have a tiebreaker, you know.
And I'll donate some money for.
I was gonna say, that was my next thing, if any businesses or individuals would like to donate to the Ford Park Hunt to go throw some hot hogs and uh buns, that would be awesome. Uh just let Sherry know or myself and uh we can.
We get it, we need to do, or we get it to Sherry or?
Yeah, we need to donate some money.
And then she'll she'll make sure that we're set together, so.
We get it, we get it soon. I understand it. It's we just went through the state board of council, a county, and we can't talk about what what's happened, but it'll be up on the website today morning and we're talking about it.
Not problem.
But we. Sure, sure, we did a good job.
Yeah.
Can't tell you what all is wrong with her, but mental and physicals and everything.
But the but the.
Said I'm not wearing a jumpsuit, that's why I'm saying.
I tried, you didn't put the cuff on, it was black.
Did.
Sherry just did a.
But the amendment is really successful last year, so we just want to build on it area at at least something.
You might want to put on your website that it's not just only Jeeps, anybody can.
Anyone, yeah, and that's what I said, everyone's available, so I'll let them know too, because this is Mr. Beast in the town, because I would love to see more of the town.
Did we tell the church?
Uh?
Did we tell the church that they might want to come out and do that?
No, because they'll try to kick over the whole park like they did the fire.
I don't think the church is doing anything, no, this year.
Huh.
What?
They can come at the lunch, I mean.
Yeah.
And you want to talk to them about it, see if you want to come down?
And we do, it's what the visitors should know.
So yeah, yeah.
Because they're publicizing it too.
Yeah.
And I talked to him about what we're gonna do for some kind of celebrations or.
That's coming up.
He's gonna give me a date.
On Monday.
And we'll start shooting your invited.
Your utilities, your utilities. You're messing up my list. We are having a fundraising chicken noodle dinner either in January, February. Uh we decided to do that as a cook-off as well, to get the townies involved and and sharing their recipes and they're getting a judge, and it's just something to take it to another little level and as a fundraiser for the park. Uh the the military banners, I just gave Sherry the application, uh Sue contacted me back today. The price has gone up to one hundred and twenty five this year because of running costs. Uh and they're very similar, but different. The deadline is still December thirty first. So that's kind of this year's, it's I think the the blue, like the turquoise jumps out a little more and the flags different directions and stuff. She tried, they try to keep it a little bit different, but obviously you're gonna be kind of limited on how how different it can get every year. Uh if they're gold star, of course, they'll have the gold star on there as well. Uh she is going to be bringing posters over there, you're in this week, and I told her she asked her, we'd like to see them, and I said, town hall, post office, job loan and fire department, which basically the.
You forgot.
Well, I don't know if that'd be overkill, though. I mean, we can, I'll tell her, but then everyone, everyone's gonna have us, so basically. I just wanted to get whoever the the most traffic, and by then, by the time in the years going around, hopefully the pizza place will be open, maybe we can sit over there. So. So that's going along, so if anyone has military in their family and you want to get them involved, we'll we'll be putting that word out continuously going forward.
And we'll be taking care of the banner for Bill. Scott and I will be taking care of the banner for Bill.
We'll do it this year and see what happens if anyone else was ever getting it. For the year celebration, uh we're having our park board meeting on Wednesday, and we will get a definite paper, so then that's gonna be the major part of that, besides uh Jeepers Creepers will be that.
Most of it kind of happened, three contractors and board and two that are taking help with.
Because it's gonna be strategic to get it where there's nothing else going on, because we don't want it to overlap and we want it to be its own.
I don't know why they want to put to line up and they can do something. If somebody else has got something, they, we don't care, you know.
Yeah.
There's always something going on somewhere.
Exactly. We're not gonna drill up the the little bitty things that might be, you know, but we don't want to go up against, like, like we weren't gonna put Jeepers Creepers up against May. You know, that's just, it's too overlapping, so. And that's all we have.
Thank you. Okay, next up, if you can donate a contract or report.
Quick, quick uh intro here. Um the church is not doing anything, so I just let Steve know that we've invited into the the park to the.
If they want to come down for a turkey, they're not telling me, more than married, that's all I care about.
More Katie with kids.
He said he'll announce it at church one Sunday.
Thank you.
Um utility contractor, she met.
Um you might pull up, let me, um N P did not have a report because Derek had a death in his family. He's one that does, as I told him, I came today, I said, just give us this month and next month. I think he's going to submit this on tomorrow, next month. Uh we met with water release, water plants running as they showed no violations. The tow gallons pump for September is seven hundred seventy six thousand and bill was seven hundred twenty nine thousand one hundred, leaving a loss of forty six thousand nine hundred or six percent. I didn't conduct it, a water inspection, not a leak, issue report was working screen on water uh tower overflow, work permit to screen on the pouring line net and our water loss being over fifteen percent. However, Troy said he did uh uh tell them about our loss for September and they removed the fifteen percent violation on us. Uh those agreements have been repaired and a response has been sent. Ideally, we have five customers that said they have galvanized lines entering the home, some are going to be always to contact the managers to see if they can verify that they are indeed galvanized. If they are galvanized, we'll need to come with them up their places lines, which I don't think it should be on the panel, plus she will be down after twenty eight.
I agree with the not playing part. Once it goes past the meter, somebody else.
No, that's not, yes.
Okay. So we only had six percent of water loss this month.
Yes, he is.
Last month it was out of control.
Yeah.
This makes no sense, makes sense.
Well, it does make sense because it's just during the summer months, so he is going, Troy is meeting Carla this week, and they're gonna go to the alliance and check out the meters there and see if there's an issue of their meters.
Absolutely. So somewhere on the readers. Everyone said check out our, we didn't tell, there's no water in some.
Need to drink.
It's pretty.
So I would be just the summer?
There's the summer months, because they're they're they pump those. Which is about tanks for like twenty thousand. You make run that out on a daily basis. That's true. Yeah. Um input commissioner report, uh Jack. Oh, it's sorry.
Uh no locate, no locate, made done or I've done okay, but they're pretty much remarks, stuff like that, so all they gotta do is press a button, so you gotta do it or charge for those. Subject topics we're gonna do September and August and October. Uh mowing, upcoming jobs, pump the tanks, mowing hopefully is gonna be done. We will do a at the park and probably at the water, not the water tower, but the sewer plant. After all, most of the lease are gone, so it's gonna help us out a little bit next year, starting to getting all that out there, so. Mine's almost done, it hasn't, if you notice, it hasn't been.
Kind of got it today, couldn't even hardly tell that we, I mean, there was tall weeds, you know, the tall, it has, what is it, mud form or whatever.
Mud form and nothing else.
Yeah, so I figured maybe we try to do the park maybe midweek, next week, that way it's maybe done for three or four weeks then under that.
Do you guys want to let us know that they're now in a ready to winterize the building like after Jeepers Creepers, that you know how they want to wait, so we'll we'll get an order to name it this time.
You will do? Sounds good. You done?
Sure.
Uh input commissioner report, Jack Conway, the CEO of N P is one of the only members of a committee on the state that is looking into why they cost the utilities and media so high. Uh, utilities for advance in Emple are probably the lowest in the state by far.
What's it compared to the state or other states?
We're, we're worried about Emple. And the thing is, is, uh, A D S is asking for a sixteen percent raise, lift to act part of twenty percent raise, and we're, and Emple's not asking for much of anything at all, actually, but, and they said it was, what, point five or something like that. Next, you have that. There's no reason for them to raise the rates, the risk of A D S, that Emple is a consumer, or a mutually owned organization, all the others are stockholders, so they raise the rates, see if they can get a return on the stock, well, that's what Jackson argued in front of. Any other?
Where's ours?
Fire. Fire report, uh, four EMS, two motor vehicle accidents, five canceled, two persons in distress, and a poer lying down. Sorry, I, I have to read it the way it is. I know, you know, the guy who wrote it, it's going, he wouldn't, he wouldn't pass the second. You tell Carrie to do it. Usually I'm, I'm trying to get a mental, but somebody. Uh, police, there's no report because Brad's not here tonight, and he's sick. Uh, old business, Tom guest, pole attachment, I think.
It's still in the negotiations.
We're still negotiating with them over the pole attachment, I don't know what that's going on, I'm not that, um, the, he was negotiating with, with Tom guest, and Tom guest, and putting this and that one day or another, and we're saying.
Some of the things aren't in the town's best interest, they're trying to make us a middleman or something, so we don't need to be doing that, so, she's trying to get that one.
Yep. So we're trying to set up so that we don't have to get involved in disputes right now. Uh, next up is a tiny homes office, there are three parts of this ordinance that we've looked at. Part one is when we reduce the size of houses. Uh, right now, the state of, uh, or the county says that the houses have to be in twelve or fifteen hundred square foot, and we can go down that to four hundred square foot. One million, between four hundred and six hundred square foot. There have been a lot of requests for small houses, reason being, young couples can afford a, uh, three bedroom, two and a half, that ranch type house, because they're three, four hundred thousand dollars, and young couples can afford it. Old people, kind of downsized, but these, they've got bigger, southern legal houses, and buy some small paintwork. Uh, there's room in advance for tiny houses, and I'm talking a little bit more, we just got to see how it works out. And the, the three part, the first part is the size of houses, the second part, wanna put back for review, can hold back until next meeting, because hard to, we're talking about putting, uh, a building on your, say your property, or, or Dave's property, or somebody in the family. In other words, a small house or, the thing that we're talking about, an R B, or a house or, on a foundation, I'm saying, we just probably pull that out and we'll ask for it. But I need to talk to the A P C ladies, negotiate that, we may have to run back through the A P C, but they have proved it, and the third one is setting rates for the, oh, basic, the rates for the, the.
Yeah, it was, uh, the fees.
The fees.
And one fee schedule.
Okay, one fee schedule, in other words, make it a lot more simple people. So, I'm gonna ask for, you wanna?
I'll, I'll be, I'll put out.
We're, we're the one that's one, and we're just, and we're, we're just two up the town, next month, I'm gonna talk to somebody, I gotta. The stuff I saw there, I didn't like, you know, I think, I know you wouldn't like it, so I didn't, I just sent back a couple.
Okay, so the first one is ordinance twenty twenty-five oh six, an ordinance to amend the text of the town having zoning ordinance regarding men on home size. Whereas the town of Athens council recognizes the need for orderly growth and development within its planning jurisdiction, and whereas the town of Athens has an existing zoning ordinance that regulates development within its jurisdictional areas, and whereas the current zoning ordinance does not have provisions for the development of, quote, tiny homes on residential lots, and whereas the current minimum home size does not allow for the flexibility for housing types that the town desires, and whereas the area planning commission seeks to establish provisions for tiny homes by reducing the minimum home size for single-family residential development, and whereas by a vote uh, town council hereby accurs to the zoning ordinance, so section now, uh, therefore, section one, the amendments are for the purpose of reducing the minimum home size in the zoning ordinance as specifically outlined in Exhibit A, this ordinance is effective on the state, so. And then it just changes on district.
What's the minimum size gonna be? I don't know.
Um, four hundred to eight, less than, four hundred and less than eight hundred square feet with a maximum of one bedroom, eight hundred, nine hundred square feet with a maximum of two bedrooms, greater than nine hundred square feet with a minimum of one bedroom.
So basically, the tiny houses, one bedroom, should we talk about, talk to, if you observe that? She said that would be two people, like two old people or three young people, and then they buy a house and kids, you know? Some equity in the house, and buy a big house when they got kids.
Yeah, it says a tiny home of compact housing, new design to maximize space efficiency and minimize environmental impacts.
So we're, Elon Musk is partnering up with somebody that looks at tiny houses, and the little bitty one that they got with everything in it is eight thousand dollars for the house, which you can add, I would say, to make it bigger. I don't know what the options are, and that's probably, like, you buy a, a campbell, the next thing you do, you buy a, a Cadillac.
Some of them are actually pretty cool.
Tiny house, maybe.
Gonna get a motion, gonna get a motion to approve.
Suspend the arrest.
Okay.
Second.
On purpose, say aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve, uh, minimum size of houses, ordinance, what's your?
I'll make the motion, that's pretty bold, that's twenty twenty-five oh six.
Second. On purpose, say aye. I said, once I find out some information, you definitely share with that second, I may bring it back here and then modify, so it's a little bit better for us.
I could cover it pretty well, you know?
More reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five oh seven, an ordinance to amend the text of the town of Athens zoning ordinance in the need to adopt a new county fee schedule, whereas the Boone County Area Planning Commission seeks to amend its fee schedule with regard to fees for building permits and the A P C, E Z A applications, and whereas the Boone County Area Planning Commission oversees the advanced zoning ordinance that currently contains the schedule, and whereas for practicality, the Boone County Area Planning Commission seeks to remove said fee schedule from the text of its zoning ordinance and have the Boone County fee schedule adopted by the council. And whereas by a vote of, uh, town council hereby accurs to amended amendment to the zoning ordinance, as well as amendment to adopt a Boone County fee schedule accordingly. Now therefore, in order to discuss, section one, the amendments are for the purpose of amending and adopting a new fee schedule, and it's attached here to, as it said, the A and corporate hearing. Of course, section two, the A P C, E Z A fees shall be in full force and effective immediately. Section three, in accordance with I C thirty-six dash five dash two dash ten, the building permit fee shall be in full force and effect ninety days after being published, in accordance with I C five dash three dash one.
Can I mention some of those fees?
Yes. So a base fee, which applies to all permits, is a hundred and sixty, uh, which includes up to two hours of structural plan review, as well as file processing, scheduling, inspections. Structural review, forty-five an hour cycle plan review, another fifty an hour inspections of, um, uh, temporary electric, forty-five, footing, forty-five, underslam, forty-five, foundation, forty-five, uh, rough end, full H P U C plumbing, electric, ninety, rough end, single trade, forty-five, insulation and energy efficiency, seventy, final forty-five, final recurrence certificate of occupancy, ninety, reinspection fee and additional inspection, sixty-five, uh, actual about three sixty-five, demolition, hundred. Uh, and then the, uh, E Z A petitions, variance eight hundred, special exception eight hundred, special exception with minor residential subdivision, twelve hundred, additional variances, two hundred, uh, use classification requirement, E Z A hearing, five hundred, appeal of, R B, E Z A hearing, five hundred. A P C petitions, uh, subdivision concept plan, a hundred, subdivision primary clad, thousand, subdivision secondary clad, whole clad amendment, fifteen hundred, development plan or development amendment, a thousand, some map change, thousand, some map change, and Q D district ordinance, a thousand plus a hundred per page of Q D district ordinance.
Gonna get a motion to suspend it for a second rate.
The motion for a second rate.
Second. On purpose, say aye. The motion to approve the fee schedule.
The motion to approve such a fee schedule for ordinance twenty-five oh seven.
Good second. Second. On purpose, say aye. Okay.
We just need to choose.
Uh, new visitor certification, for president, called on the science, the review department, I P, and check our family settlement, O P documents. It's a, it's through, none of these companies, and there's a big settlement out of that, and I don't wanna piece of this, I'm just trying to make sure. It's got a, it's not very much, it's like a hundred bucks, okay, it's not much, good stuff. We're gonna get a mechanic for mental health and bird work damage, they screwed that up, I can't deal with it, I'm just taking it. Putting it in front for.
Well, I mean, I do have, it's, it's, it's.
We should, probably, this way, it's a conference, it's on there.
Something a motion we're gonna do this time, that'll do it, that'll win.
Next.
On purpose, say aye.
And he's our signature for application, that's his too.
Anything else? Whatever you have to say.
I'm left in the open, it's during this.
Actually.
I'm looking at forty-five minutes, man, I'm ready to pick it up.
Is anybody know if one of them bottles?
Here.
Just one of them bottles, please, from time to time. You want me to make a copy of this, you know, really rude, but in the.
Oh, they actually kinda stop by there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah, just in case they do stop and.
That way, so, uh, as soon as she.
Yeah.
Probably demolish his house over there. Then get it all, like.
Oh, yeah, they're, oh, wow, so, yes.
Hey Keith, if we go out there, and you open the door, and sign that drug, he's right there. You're gonna fall out.